...of intrigues between worship and praise. So the comment is that more than praise or more than worship? Praise, right? So I'm not, I'm not saying there's, it's a lesser thing to worship the Lord. God desires for worship. It's powerful, but there's also something about when, uh, when a word or a thought, an idea is being repeated again and again in the scripture. Are you with me? And there are, there were several times in the scriptures that when men and women, or men of God, either individual or corporate, would praise God with their whole heart. Praise God with all intensity, praise God with their voices, with clapping and shouting or dance. And celebrate God, His works, His goodness, no matter what the circumstance will be. You'll see the scripture that again and again, God steps in and shows forth His glory. One of you believe here that there is more? That the ten years so far, it's been amazing, but it's just the beginning of something much greater. Amen? And today, before we start singing, I really want us to give our all and praise God. Praise God for those years, praise God for every victory, praise God for His faithfulness. Praise God for provisions, for healing. Praise God that He left His name on high. You know, there's, there's a revelation of God's power, God's nature, and He revealed it with a name. You know, who God is to you, call that name if He's been a faithful provider. You say it, you shout it, you hope, you are mighty, you're a giant. So there's a scripture that says in Book of Songs, "God is enthroned in the praises of His people." You know, God dwells in the praises of His people. Two thoughts. One, God literally is enthroned. As we praise Him, we're, we're, as if we're building a throne to the Lord. That's why, that's why Don Moen sings that song. "And as we worship, build your throne," right? "And as we worship, build your throne." So as we praise Him, as we declare who God is, He is enthroned, He's sitting on our praises. And you know what happens when the king sits down? The king releases authority. The king releases power. The king releases and expands His kingdom. I don't know your circumstances. Coming here, some of you, maybe it's a challenge to be here. Some of you, it's vacation. Some of you, you're barely made it. Some of you, you just don't know what's gonna happen after this. Whatever is your circumstance, I tell you, there is a king who wants to be enthroned in your praises. Amen? Again, when the king sits, the authority is with him. When the king sits, a decree from heaven will be proclaimed. The very breakthrough you're looking for could be in this moment that you would praise. How do we praise Him? Several times in the scriptures, it says, "Praise Him with shout." "Praise Him with clap." "Praise Him with dances." "Praise Him, proclaim His name to the nations." So when we praise Him, declare it, not just whisper it, declare aloud. Are you with me? Declare aloud, and if, if you're, as if you're waiting for your breakthrough, start declaring. You're the God of breakthrough, you're my breakthrough, again and again, just declare that. And, and the very declaration becomes a throne on which God sits. Are you with me? If it's healing, start declaring, "You're Jehovah Rapha, you're my healer." Or "You're my banner." "You're my shalom." "You're my provision." "You're my rock, my fortress, my deliverer." "You're my song." "You're my healer, you're my peace." And I believe in God, even as we speak this afternoon, before the session comes. You will meet God in a very personal way. You will have your own breakthrough in a very personal way. Are you with me? I experienced this last time in Malaga. At a conference of Pastor Komi. Pastor TM Stevenson from New Zealand exhorted us to praise God. I like more than 10 minutes, and I'm right there. I saw a boy, 13 years old, lost in the presence of God, crying aloud. And I saw him on the floor. I could see glory all over him. I knew God showed this amazing God for him. Therefore, the king wants to be enthroned. And sometimes the greatest offering we could give is to praise Him, even the midst of our pain. In the midst of our confusion, the midst of our struggles. In the midst of waiting. Don't despair, praise Him. Amen? In Acts, chapter 16, when Paul and Silas were in prison. They were locked up. There's no way they'll have freedom. All the physical things says they are in prison. But a heart of praise, praise can never be in prison. Because a heart of praise connects to God. Our assurance is not prayer. Things are prayer. Our assurance is this. We have a God who sits on the throne. And He rules everything. Paul and Silas sang hymns when they were inside the prison. They did not wait for them to be set free before they were taken. Praise became the very weapon that God used to set them free. As as they praised God, suddenly an angel showed up, and there was an earthquake. All the prison doors opened up. You might be in prison in situations in your life. Finances. Maybe cycle of defeats, whatever. Five years have been a struggle, three years. Lord, Your promise, Your promise is not getting free. Nevertheless, friends, I invite you. It's your time to come out of your prisons. How you do that? How, how do you do that? Praise Him with all your mind. Praise Him for who He is. Praise Him because He is eternal, He is victorious, He is our God, He is our deliverance, He is our everything. Amen? So lastly, you know, remember, also, there was a time in the Bible that when Peter, on his way into the temple, saw this man begging. And Peter said, "Silver and gold I have none, but such I have, I will give in the name of Jesus Christ upon my walk." And we know what happened. That guy, believing and receiving what Peter said, the declaration. He stood up, and the Bible says, "And he walked." He started walking and living and praising God. And that's a picture of complete healing. Walking, he's a man, physically, he got here. Are you with me? Living, joy started to overflow. There was an inner healing that happened. Because he's been laying for years, since birth. There was no total joy, not complete joy. But when he got his healing, joy came out. And lastly, he started praising God. Spiritually, he was healed as well. I pray this very moment, we'll have a beautiful healing, awakening, maybe in our physical, maybe in our emotions, in our mind, or even in our spirit. So friends, that's all I said to you. We won't sing songs yet, but I want everyone, everyone stand to your feet. Everybody in this room stand to your feet. And can we spread out if you, if you want to spread out and make room? So if, if the Spirit of God comes to you and you feel like dancing, go ahead. But can we do this? Can we just close our eyes right now and lift up our hands, two hands together? Like open wide, open wide. And I want to invite all of us. As I mentioned, praise is not just a whisper, praise should be declared. Okay? Praise is a declaration, it's a shout, it's a celebration. You know, whether you're, you're, you're the man waiting for a healing, or you are Paul and Silas inside of a prison, or you're the one who always know that God sits on the throne of your praises. At the count of three, I want all of us just declare over this place, over your life, over the atmosphere, over the heaven, who God is to you. And I want you to do that for solid five minutes or more. Come on. One, two, three, just declare, come on, just declare. Shout it out. Come on, declare who Jesus is. Declare who God is. Declare who He is. Declare who He is. No whisper. Declare, declare, shout, 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 shout. Declare, declare who He is. Shout it out, shout it out. Come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. Shout it out. Turn away, turn away, turn away! Turn away! Let's show us praise. Show us praise. Hallelujah! Come on, declare. Start a breakthrough. You're not dying, you're ready to. Lift up your voice. Lift up your voice. Shout it out. Shout it out. Come on, just declare. Declare His glory. Yes! Let's declare, let's declare, praise Him. Come on! Praise Him, praise Him, come on. No matter what, no matter what, I choose to praise. Come on, just go, go. Let's declare. Hallelujah! Come on, praise, praise. Lift up your voice. Come on, come on. Declare it's praise. Swing wide open. Swing wide open. Swing wide open. Oh! Swing wide open. Break through! Oh, break! Oh, break! Come on, everyone, everyone. Continue, continue. Yes, we're seeing in your name. We're seeing in your name. Your glory is. Your glory is, come on, come on. Continue, continue, praise Him, praise Him. Praise Him in the beauty of His holiness. You are right. Your glory is. You are wonderful. Your love is. Your love is. A love that is great. A love of miracles. A love of all. Open up. Oh, open up. 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 Oh, open up. Oh, open up. Oh, open up. Let the King of glory come. Open up. Come on, just lift up your voices. Welcome the King of glory. Oh, glory. Oh, your glory. Oh, your glory. Oh, your glory. Shout. Oh, fill the streets with celebration. Fill the streets with your glory. Fill the streets with shouts of glory. 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 Come on. Glory. Give him glory! Glory. Glory. Come on, feel His presence. Hallelujah! Lift up your voice. Lift up your voice. Come on, God is here. Come on, praise Him. In an old, an old tongue, speaking tongues right now. Shalay. Shalabababababassala. 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 Oh, yes, shalabababababassala. Shalabababababassala. Come on, come on, come on. Just praise Him, praise Him. Praise Him in the beauty of His holiness. Praise Him. For everything that is God. You are wonderful. Your glory is. Oh. Beautiful and wonderful. Don't let just think. Oh. Hallelujah. Into other faces of your people. Come on, He's here. He's here, the Holy Spirit is here. The presence of God is here, come on. Enter, enter, enter. As we listen, His power. Come on, Lord. Come on, Lord. Come on, Lord. Your presence. I come and love. I come and love. I come and love. There's glory. There's glory. There's glory in this place. There's glory. Glory. Glory in this place. Welcome the King of glory. Glory. Oh, glory. Glory in this place. The King is here. Yes. Glory. Glory in this place. Glory. Glory. Glory in this place. Come on, just say it. Glory. Glory. Glory in this place. Glory. Glory. Glory in this place. Now declare this. You're making all things new. Making all things new. You're making all things new. You're making all things. Come on, just declare. You're making all things new. You're making all things new. Come on. You're making all things new. You're making all things new. You're making all things new. You're making all things. You're making all things. You're making all things. Introduce season, come on again. All things new. Sing to you a new song. 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 Cause you're amazing. Sing a new song. Sing to you a new song. Sing to you a new song. Hear the chains falling. Hear the prison doors swing wide open. Here, here the king sits on the throne and releases the queen of victory, breakthrough, healing, blessing all over him. Hear the voice of the king. Hear the celebration in the heavens of angels declaring the will of the Father, of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. And today, this very moment, we welcome the King of glory. Open up new gates. Open up new relation doors. And the King of glory, let the King of glory come in. Let the King of glory come in. In every nation represented here. Let the King of glory come in. Every family, every individual, let the King of glory come in. Season. Breakthrough. Season of breakthrough. Hallelujah! Hallelujah. This time, I want us, we will give a huge, big, big shout, clap our hands, and just sustain celebration as we welcome the King of glory in our midst. Come on, give a clap, a break. Give a shout of break. Bless the Lord of my soul. Oh, my soul. Worship His holy name. One more time. Bless the Lord of my soul. Oh, my soul. Worship His holy name. Still like ever before. Oh, my soul. I worship Your holy name. The sun comes up. It's a new day dawn. It's time to sing your song again. Whatever may pass and whatever lies before me. And me be singing when the heat be gone. Bless the Lord. Bless the Lord of my soul. Oh, my soul. Worship His holy name. Still like ever before. Oh, my soul. I worship Your holy name. Bless the Lord. Bless the Lord of my soul. Oh, my soul. Worship His holy name. Still like ever before. Oh, my soul. I worship Your holy name. Your rich share love and Your slow to reign. Your name is sweet and Your heart is strong. Oh, Your goodness, I will keep on singing. Come on. Ten thousand reasons for my heart to cry. Bless the Lord of my soul. Oh, my soul. Worship His holy name. Still like ever. Sing like ever before. Oh, my soul. I worship your holy name. Oh, bless the Lord. Bless the Lord of my soul. Oh, my soul. Worship his holy name. Oh, sing like ever before. Oh, my soul. I worship your holy name. Bless the Lord. Bless the Lord of my soul. Oh, my soul. Worship his holy name. Worship his name. Sing like ever before. Oh, my soul. I worship your holy name. Sing with a loud song. And on that day when my strength is failing, the angels near and my time has gone. Still my soul sing your praise, I am dead. Ten thousand years and then forever more. Forever. Bless the Lord of my soul. Oh, my soul. Worship his holy name. Sing like ever before. Oh, my soul. I worship your holy name. Bless the Lord of my soul. Oh, my soul. Worship his holy name. Sing like ever before. Oh, my soul. I worship your holy name. Bless the Lord. Bless the Lord of my soul. Oh, my soul. Worship his holy name. Sing like ever before. Oh, my soul. I worship your holy name. 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 There's no one like you. Oh, but let your name on. In the highest plan. Tell me within my heart. Worship your holy name. Worship your holy name. I worship your holy name. Worthy of every song we could ever sing. Worthy of all the praise we could ever praise. Worthy of every prayer we could ever pray. Believe for you. Jesus, the name above every other. Jesus, the only one we could ever say. Worthy of every prayer we could ever pray. Believe for you. Believe for you. Holy, there is no one like you. There is nothing beside you. Open up my eyes in wonder. Show me who you are and fill me with your heart. Lead me in your love to those around me.